All right, we now call the city council regular meeting to order for December the eighth, six P M. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Father, we thank you for this day, Lord. Lord, we ask that you, Holy Spirit, be here tonight. Father, we ask that you give us your wisdom, Lord. Ask that you give us your peace, Father. Ask that you bless this town, Lord, the state, and this country, Father, and we will stand in prayer. Amen.
I declare the name of this is my United States of America, through the Republic of States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have you seen it? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Here.
Councilmember McKeer?
Here.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Here.
Mayor Anderson?
Here. First up, item number five, we have the employee longevity recognition, Ms. Coger.
Yes, the city would like to recognize four individuals. They're not here tonight, but we still want to extend that recognition. We have Rachel Brennan. She's our utility billing customer service representative. Been here one year. Winnie Gordon, finance specialist, has also been here one year. David Callahan, our parks and sports worker, has been here five years. And Michael Qualls, solid waste driver, has been with the city for twenty years. So we thank them all for their service.
Awesome. We thank you. Thank you very much. Next up, we have a special proclamation honoring a very special middle school student here by the name of Rayleigh Repress.
She won...
What's that?
Respress.
Respress? I'll blame the print. Winner of an art in the Capitol, art in the Capitol competition. Jim, do you want to say anything before we read the... I just see that your name was on here.
No, I just noticed that the article in the newspaper and a lot of times I, things to do with Avon Park, I put on my Facebook page and I thought that she ought to be noticed the fact that she won the state title. And I believe at some time, March or April, May, that actually the painting or artwork will be placed at the Capitol Building. So I thought, I thought we should do something nice to start the meeting off in a happy mood.
Very good. With that, we'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas the art in the Capitol competition is a prestigious voluntary competition authorized by Florida statutes, designed to recognize and showcase the outstanding visual arts talents of the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students across the state of Florida. And whereas Rayleigh Respress, a talented student at Avon Park Middle School, has been named the Highlands County winner of the statewide art in the Capitol competition, a truly remarkable distinction. And whereas Rayleigh Repress's winning artwork was selected as the very best among entries from the Highlands County, demonstrating exceptional skill, creativity, and dedication to the visual arts. And whereas this outstanding achievement brings great pride to Avon Park Middle School and the entire Highlands County community, showcasing the high caliber of arts education and student talent in our schools. And whereas Rayleigh Respress was formally recognized for the prestigious accomplishment at the Highlands County School Board Meeting on Wednesday, November twelfth, twenty twenty-five, accompanied by her principal, Ms. Riley, and her art teacher, Ms. Pierce. And whereas Rayleigh's magnificent artwork will be displayed in this Florida State Capitol Building beginning in March, representing her school and community on a statewide level. Now therefore be it proclaimed that we, the Avon Park City Council, do hereby extend our sincerest and most enthusiastic congratulations to Rayleigh Respress on her exceptional achievement. We commend her for her dedication, congratulate her principal and her art teacher for her guidance and recognition, and recognize her for being a superb representative of Avon Park Middle School and our entire community. Congratulations, Rayleigh Respress. I'm assuming she's not here tonight. Okay. All right, we'll save that for later. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. This will be for items seven through thirteen. Is there any of these items council wishes to remove?
I'd like to remove C eleven, just because I have a question on it.
C eleven, all right, seven through ten.
C thirteen as well.
Seven through ten and twelve. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve C seven through ten and twelve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. All right, item number eleven. You have a question?
Yeah, so if we're taking, we're removing Dr. Kelly and then so Jason would be temporary ability to sign the checks. How many other people are on that account to sign?
It's the mayor, the vice mayor, the city manager, and the finance director.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion to approve item number eleven.
I'll make a motion to approve C eleven.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second, please.
We have a motion in a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. Item number thirteen.
So for C thirteen, there were quite a few blanks on her event request permit. And Melissa actually spoke to the applicant, and so I was just going to have her put on record what the applicant said to fill in the rest of those blanks, since the chief, she said, had asked about it as well.
Yes, ma'am. So yes, I received the application as it is. I contacted the applicant and asked those questions. They are, she said that they were just asking to use the city property at the basketball court. They were going to have two tents to set up tables with clothes to hand out to the residents. There is going to be no vendors, no cooking, no structures, and they were, no road closures. And they would have a small speaker playing Christian music.
Okay.
And no bounce houses as well.
No, no bounce houses, no.
And these are ten by ten tents, smaller size.
Any other questions? Seeing none?
I have a question for Melissa. Is this an old application that they had?
That's, those were the applications that, that were here when I got here. I have just finished creating a new one. And I've just put that on the website. I'm trying to make the process a little more complete so that we don't have all these questions at the, at the end.
Any other questions?
The bathrooms that are there, they're always open, right? From morning to afternoon?
Well, in the day, yes, but we, we lock them in the, in the evening hours.
Okay.
Unless we have an event, like if we're going to have an event, we go by. We opened them up this, this past Saturday for the event that took place, just in case anyone walked down Main Street and wanted to use them.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question for Melissa. So Melissa, I have a better understanding of the application. The one that's in the agenda and the one that was placed on our desk, which one is the most prominent?
Okay, so the one that was placed on the dais is a request from somebody else that will be here later to speak in public comments because they brought it in on Friday.
Okay.
That's a totally separate one.
But which one is the most accurate application?
Which form is the most up to date?
Because they're different.
I know they're different, so I was creating them. I sent that one out for, for comments and I think...
This is the most...
Yeah, so downstairs had a, had a different application than upstairs, and that's why they're two different things. But they have the same questions. And the other one will be totally different than that.
Just let us know when the final form is here.
It's on the website right now.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Anything else on item number thirteen?
I just want to mention, I don't see any certificate of insurance attached to that.
Yes, sir, I will make sure they get it. She, she provided the whole insurance packet that she got. So I've asked her for the other one, for the certificate of insurance.
Thank you.
So you definitely have it, we just haven't sorted through it. Okay. So you probably just want to approve it pending the certificate of insurance. Anything else for item number thirteen?
Well, there's a binder on that one. I know it's not the same as a...
Not the same thing.
What?
It's not the same thing.
I know. I'm just saying, I, but don't you, when they initiate a binder, that seals it and it's just a legality of whatever, getting the certificate.
Certificate of Insurance has things that, that are, tell us what, what is actually covered in the policy.
Okay.
Somebody should review the policy as well, but things like subrogation and additional insured are listed there.
I got you. Thank you.
Anything else for item number thirteen? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve C thirteen pending the insurance verification.
Second, please.
We have a motion, we have a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. We have a request to move item number twenty-four up so that Melody can get to an event. Item number twenty-four, this is to open a non-interest bearing airport deposit and utility deposit account. Melody, would you brief us on that?
Yes, sir. So we are required to hold deposits, any customer deposits, in non-interest bearing accounts. With the airport coming back to us, we wanted to create one for the airport. And then for easier tracking with the utility, the customer utility deposits, we wanted to open a non-interest bearing for that as well.
Perfect. Any other questions on this account?
It'll be two accounts, one for airport and one for utility deposit.
Do we have a motion to approve the two accounts?
So move.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. All right, item number fourteen. This will be a public hearing, second and final reading of ordinance twenty-five dash twenty twenty-five.
For fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, like if we have motion to postpone to the next meeting for each one of those because the, we have not received the approval back yet from the state to read it the second time.
Okay.
So we're going to postpone those. So if we have motion for each one of those, postpone and move to the next meeting.
Any questions before we make the motion?
So all three of these, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen?
Yes.
You want a motion individually?
I would prefer that, just in case.
So we need a motion to postpone indefinitely item number fourteen?
Second. So to the next meeting, definitely to the next meeting.
Do you wish to make that motion, Jim?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. Do we have a similar motion for item number fifteen?
So move.
Second.
To the next meeting.
We have a motion. You still wish a second?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. Same thing for item number sixteen?
So move, next meeting, please.
Second.
We have a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. What about item number seventeen and eighteen here?
Yeah, we're good to go on that.
Okay. Next will be a public hearing, second and final reading of ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty twenty-five.
An ordinance of the City of Avon Park, Florida, amending this Avon Park Unified Land Development Code related to certified recovery residences, specifically amending Article Two, Table two point oh four point oh one A, Table of Land Uses, Article Two, Section two point oh two point oh eight, adult family care home, family daycare home, and family foster home. And amending Article Nine, definitions, providing for servability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date. We have such for Regional Planning Council.
Yes, ma'am. Is that microphone on the little blue light?
There we go.
All right.
Okay. Stephanie Von Polesky-Bush with the Central Florida Regional Planning Council. This is an amendment to your land development code that you heard at your last meeting, I think. And it has to do with certified recovery residences. If you go to the next slide. So this is required by state law. The governor signed this law into effect on June twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-five, and it's required to be adopted by local governments by January first of twenty twenty-six. And it provides a process for, to apply reasonable accommodations from land use regulations to operate a certified recovery residence. And then, yeah, on the next slide, so what we're doing is we're adding a couple of definitions, one into your Article Nine. One of them is for an actual definition of recovery residence. And then there's another definition of a certified recovery residence. A certified recovery residence is just a resident, a residence that holds a valid certificate of compliance and is actively managed by a certified recovery residence administrator. And the next slide shows, we're adding another, actually a third definition that discusses reasonable accommodation. I'm not going to read that whole thing to you, but basically, as an example, if someone is handicapped and they need a ramp in front of the house to be built, they can go ahead and do that without going through the planning and zoning or anything else that is required, that is currently required. And then on the next slide, so then we're adding Section two point oh two oh eight. In that section, we're adding under adult family care home, family daycare home, family foster home, and certified recovery residences. So that language is consistent with Senate Bill nine, nine fifty-four. And it's actually a lot of language that's very long, so I'm obviously not going to read all that. And then on the next slide, so we're also adding that section into your table of uses under group care facilities. It'll also just include and certified recovery residences in the, all the residential land use categories, or zoning categories, sorry. On the neck, oh, and then the next slide is your motion options. I, I can answer, I can try to, I know I zipped through that, but I can answer questions if you have them.
Any questions?
Question? So I don't, I don't quite understand this, and I'm sorry, you know, it just doesn't come across to me well. But is this giving the, somebody the ability to have a, an assisted living facility in their home?
No, they already have that, basically, but no, this is, these certified recovery residences are like rehab, rehab facilities. Okay. And so we've been doing this around our region, and when we were in Bowling Green, last week, Susan, the city clerk there, described a situation where she used to, she got a certificate to inspect these things, and so they had to go to training in South Flor- sorry, this is a long story. Anyway, they could be in a house, they can be in like an apartment complex, they can be in an individual, like an individual apartment, which is probably not the case usually, but there's a lot of different places that they can be. But they can be, so this allows them basically to be in neighborhoods. So, but it's a state law.
The important thing is that we don't have a choice.
Right.
Statute requires it.
If we don't have a choice, I mean, I, I, while we vote no.
Exactly.
Because we have to pass it. They said pass it. That's, we don't have a choice but to pass an ordinance.
The governor said too.
That incorporates these provisions.
Um, I, I have a question. The recovery residence, that can be any type of recovery?
Wow.
I'm talking about, you know, alcohol, drugs, sex offender, that could, no, sex offender is not recovery? I'm asking.
Sex offenders.
I'm asking. The reason why I'm asking is because there's someone that's remodeling in a home, and I'm already starting to get complaints that the owner said that it's going to be a recovery. And the residents don't know what recovery, but he's said that it's going to be. And now they're telling me, make sure that doesn't happen. So now that's why I'm asking you the question. What type of recovery are we talking about?
Um, I'm going to be honest and say I don't a hundred percent know. I do know it's drugs and alcohol. I can't imagine that it would be sex offenders. I, I just, that seems, that seems like a bridge too far.
What, what, do you know where I can go in financing?
So it's Senate Bill nine fifty-four. If you, you could just Google that from twenty twenty-five.
Yep, and statute three ninety-seven point four eight seven is a voluntary certification of recovery residences.
What was it, three ninety what?
Three ninety-seven point four seven.
Just a quick search. It says structured, non-medical home, providing a supportive alcohol-drug-free environment for people in recovery from substance use disorders. Substance use.
Yeah, the definitions are under three ninety-seven point three one one.
Any other questions?
So Jerry, what would happen if, I'm not saying this council, but a council, and this was, this was presented to them, and they didn't think it was a great idea, and they did not pass it. And so then what would happen then? The governor would come and say, bad people, and you need to do it again?
There's nothing that says what, what the penalty will be for not passing it, but it says you shall pass it before January first, two thousand twenty-six. That's what, that's what the statute says, so we try to comply with statutes.
I get it, and, and, and I don't have a problem, just, I'm just curious how that, why that is such a threat for us to do that, so that's all.
All right. You'd have to ask them.
Okay, anything else? Seeing none, we'll be looking for a motion for...
Isn't it a public hearing?
Public hearing?
It's a public hearing.
It is a public hearing. All right, public hearing for, second reading of ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty twenty-five is now open. Anyone wishing to ask any questions, make any comments, can do so. Going once, going twice. Seeing no speakers, public hearing for the second reading of ordinance twenty-eight dash twenty twenty-five is now closed. We will be looking for a motion.
I make a motion and approve ordinance number twenty-eight dash twenty twenty-five, please.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. Item number eighteen, this will be a public hearing for the first reading of ordinance twenty-nine dash twenty twenty-five.
An ordinance of the City of Avon Park, Florida, amending the official zoning map of the City of Avon Park, Florida, specifically amending one parcel of land comprised of plus or minus point six eight acres on property located at two hundred Hatcher Avenue, Avon Park, Florida, three three eight two five, from a zoning of R one low-density residential to I two heavy industrial residential, providing for servability, providing for conflict, and providing an effective date.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, good evening again. Stephanie Von Polesky-Bush with the Central Florida Regional Planning Council. So this is a rezoning on, the address is two hundred Hatcher. And the parcel is, the parcel, the part of the parcel that's being rezoned is point four six acres. And on the next slide, so the existing zoning, as you can see, the parcel itself is, is, has two zonings. The dark square is R one, and then just above it is a little sliver of I one. And then on the next slide, so the proposed zoning is heavy industrial to make it all industrial. And then the next slide, so the background to the subject parcel is currently zoned R one and I two, and the request is to zone the entire parcel to I two to align with neighboring parcels. So it's, it is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the changes compatible with the surrounding area to the east. And the, and so, and note that the current future land use is industrial in that whole area. And then as far as impacts on services, city water and sewer is available, and then there'll be minimal impact on surrounding rail, roadway network. And then it's anticipated not to have negative impact, impacts to the surrounding area. And then here are your motion options. I do want to say, which I didn't put on here, the planning and zoning board voted unanimously to, for denial on this, so.
Is there a particular reason why?
That there were a lot, there was a lot of neighborhood opposition that, actually, Melissa, if you go back to the zoning one, the ones with the yellow pictures, so, yeah, for example, this, so you can see all the residential to the south and the west. There are a lot of, it's an older neighborhood, people have lived there for a long time. And they, there were several people that spoke against it. And the applicant, is applicant here? Okay.
And this is not a add-on to an existing business?
No, it's vacant.
Totally separate?
It's vacant.
Okay.
It's vacant. And they, the applicant stated that they don't actually have a use for it right now. The properties to the east, they're that big I two area. A lot of that is used for like truck parking. And so I guess the applicant for this case was thinking that they might use it for that or maybe try to sell it. They are real estate people, so.
I see.
So did they actually say what they was going to use it for?
No.
I know it was industrial, but did they actually say, we're using it, we want to use it for?
No, no, they don't have a buyer for it yet.
So it was pretty clear their intention was to sell the property.
Yeah.
So they, and they thought that an industrial designation would be more profitable. I was here at that meeting, and there were a lot of people in the audience that were really upset about it because they have lived there for a long time. They're concerned with even currently a lot of old, broken-down boats being stored on the property and just a lot of junk, they said.
Sure.
They're just really concerned about it changing the entire atmosphere of their, their communities.
And, and there is the, the blue to the north is a school, so.
So I guess they said a lot of their kids, the kids that live in the area actually stand on that corner waiting for, to go across to the school or for school buses or transportation and things like that, so. They were really concerned. They, they asked the applicant if they would consider changing the entire area to residential, but the buyers said that they, or the property owners said that they felt industrial would be a better selling point, yeah.
Well, and if they did...
Just because of the lack of industrial property in our area.
Right. And if, but if they, if, but if they did actually go that, right, then they would still need to change the future land use because the future land use is industrial. So, I mean, it's one way or the other.
Understood. Any other questions?
Do you know if the owner of the R one just to the south of us, was at the meeting or complained?
Um, I, I'm not sure. I can't remember exactly where all the people lived, but they definitely lived up and down.
A lot of them, I don't remember, lived on Williams Gray Court.
Williams Gray, yeah.
That was quite a few.
Right.
Um, Ms. Johnson actually came and spoke to, it was several of her family members. She lives in the area. I mean, there was quite a few that actually...
Yeah.
I mean, I would say, what, twenty or so in the audience, twenty to thirty?
Maybe.
So it was, it was pretty, I haven't seen a planning and zoning room that full in a long time.
Any other questions? Seeing none? So it says public hearing. Jerry, is this actually a public hearing for a first reading?
This is a pub, this is a, this is a first reading?
It says...
First reading, yeah.
So why would it be public hearing?
Understood.
So you still, still have to hear from the audience, there's a lot, a lot of difference.
Right. Just wanted to make sure. Right, just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Alright, any questions, comments from the audience? Going once, seeing none. Alright, do we have a motion? For item number eighteen, first reading of ordinance twenty-nine dash twenty twenty-five.
I'll make a motion that we decline ordinance twenty-nine dash twenty twenty-five.
I second it.
We have a motion, we have a second. Last call for questions. Please call or roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Jerry, I'm sorry, mayor. Just to go back D fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, why did you say we were postponing that?
It has to go to the State um Department of Economics, um, Opportunity, I don't know what you call it today, but uh, they have to approve it. And um, the form that it's in, and they say, once they say it approved, then it can come back for a public hearing and a second reading.
We do that for all those, right?
They were all done at the same time, and they just didn't receive that, that back from the state yet, so we, we had no choice but to defer.
That's fine. Okay, thank you.
Understood. Alright, item number nineteen, this will be the reallocation of fifty-five thousand dollars from water fund improvements fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. To be changed, the TCU upgrades to SCADA improvements. Mr. Tommy King, is this yours?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me alright?
Yes, sir.
So um, it was recommended, this is, this is labeled in the, in the budget, itemized as TCU, which is specific to uh, one particular technology that's used at the lift stations currently. But if you read through this, um, there's some significant savings that can be realized by upgrading that infrastructure to a uh cloud-based SCADA system. Also make your panels more resilient. Just reallocating this, uh, relabeling it really, from TCU upgrades to SCADA improvements, um, would allow us to move forward with a, a pilot, um, to ensure that newer technology is, is gonna benefit the city. I know um, we've had a presentation down at Public Works, um, and all the staff there are on board with, with that change.
Excellent. Any questions? Do we have a motion to approve item number nineteen?
So moved.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions.
Um, Mr. Tommy, is this something that is gonna be done to all the stations, or you just start here?
Um, we're gonna, we're gonna start with five stations that currently are not um monitored. Um, so we'll be putting five SCADA units for this pilot on those uh stations. And then if the crew, the group that Public Works is, is good with that technology, embraces it, thinks it's a better way to go, it's definitely cheaper if you read on in, read on into it. Then we'll start moving that way with all of our other stations, because the TCU failures, um, it's a proprietary technology, and it, y'all've got significant number of failures. It's an ongoing cost, so we'll have to move some direction, this is, this is probably the way we wanna go.
Any other questions? Seeing none. We have a motion and a second, please call or roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yeah, yes, excuse me.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Um, is one of the, the um, things that you're speaking of, is that the one that's on Lake Avenue that's been, that's roped around and?
Yes, currently, yeah.
Is that one of the stations?
Yep, there is a, there is a lift station there, so um, and I believe you may have put this in place when you were, you were trying to purchase spare pumps. I've got kind of a, a mix of uh, hearing y'all's stations, um, but they were moving forward, they've got them for the larger stations. Um, that's one of the smaller stations that they haven't gotten spare pumps for yet, so now we're in the, in the process of replacing them.
So yeah, it's, it's, we, we need to have, for redundancy purposes for the lift stations, we need to have that, so right now there's a bypass pump operating, not, not anymore. Yeah, as of, sorry, as of today, but that's what the noise was, if you, any of y'all received any of those complaints, that's what that is. But that's required to prevent a SSO, it's unfortunate, but um, that's, that's why we need uh backup.
Uh, moving on to another item, but you, did you decide not to go with the PFOS, PFAS uh litigation issue?
I was talking, I was talking to Tommy about it, he thinks it's pretty good, but we had to discuss that, we'll discuss it, you want me to discuss it now?
This is the last meeting of the year, and if, if you don't get it in before what, January, beginning of January, you're not gonna be able to get in?
Yeah, so January is the deadline for them getting their reimbursement on their testing. The presentation, and they have another one on the ninth, uh, for several cities, uh, is, basically it's at risk from that lawyer.
Alright, so you have, you have time to do the, wait for the eighth for the meeting in the January then?
No, I would say that y'all probably need to make a decision about moving forward, um, based off your, your recommendations, 'cause you reviewed that contract.
Yeah, I reviewed the contractor, there was a couple of things that gave me a little pause on it, you know, um, such as, if um, they quit the case for some reason, then we owe them for the time they spent. But everything else is like, um, you don't, you don't pay a dime if, if we don't, you know, recover. So, it's a little opposite of the, of what they're saying.
Jerry, can we do this in attorney updates, that way, or, or you wanna do it then, that way they could just move through with this?
Yeah, I can pull it, I can pull up my notes on it.
Okay.
Item number twenty, we have the duct cleaning and sterilization at the sheriff's substation, Mr. King.
Yeah, so uh, one of the, one of the things we got laid on, it's one of our first guys here, is there was mold um in the sheriff's uh annex over there. And um, we've made um corrections, thermostat corrections to, to mitigate most of that, they had it very, very low temperature in there. But the uh, the duck work and um, the, the grills on those AC units had already been uh contaminated, so this was a, a move, Dr. Gully recommended to go ahead and move forward, had the air conditioning company come in, sterilize, clean all those ducts, and then replace those damaged uh grills. The grills were damaged for them trying to spray chlorine and stuff, trying to clean the mold, so, um, it attacked the metal, so we're, replace those.
Okay, any questions?
Just wanna add to that, that came into it, we also received a letter um, from Sheriff Paul Blackman um, for that, and it also mentioned the roof, so that's something that we may be coming back to you regarding the roof. It says it's almost forty years old, so it wasn't budgeted, but I think it's something that um, we have the funds for that we need to um, to replace, see if we could find any kind of, if we can find grant money quickly to do something, then we can do it. If not, it'll probably somewhere be around the one-seventy range, somewhere around there, uh, to replace that roof, 'cause it was a, a concern of theirs.
Okay. Alright, do we have a motion for item number twenty?
I'll make a motion to approve twenty.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Don't all jump at once.
I'll have a second with a question.
Okay.
My question is, did we get any other bids from any, any other vendors, or did we just call them out and this is what they said we needed?
Yeah, um, Jared Watson, who's over our uh, facilities department there, he, he reached out to, I believe, to air conditioner companies, but they were the first to, to respond, and um, they were wanting to move on it quickly, 'cause we had gotten that letter from the attorneys, even though it'd only been less than thirty days, um, to go ahead and get that going.
What was this?
On the sheriff's department.
The duct cleaning.
Oh, right, okay, yep.
You knew about that, Ms. Jer?
Well, I, I got a call from um, the sheriff's attorney, he said the letter was coming, and explained why, but I didn't know about it before then.
Any other questions on the?
Everything that really that I knew about is in the letter.
Any other questions on the duct cleaning? Seeing none, please call or roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. Item number twenty-one, this will be emergency sewer main cleaning and repairs at three North Museum. Mr. King?
Yeah, so this one, this was my day one, uh, first day here, uh, the, this group had already been contracted, and we're on a site to uh line and repair some storm and um sewer over uh by the museum. And um, they called me out there when they realized that um, hey, there's a conflict structure, if you're familiar with that, it's a um, it's where sewer and water pipes sometimes cross, sometimes they concrete them in, in together. And um, there was a chance here during rain events where we, we could contaminate the stormwater system with sewer because of the age of the pipes. So, their initial plan to do these two lines, um, initially that was budgeted here for fifty thousand ten dollars, to try and stay within the, that footprint of that budget, they backed out or re-lined in those, that stormwater and that other sewer. They had inspected them, um, and cleaned them already, um, for some roots. But the line that needed to be taken care of actually stretched from uh Museum over to uh, the intersection of Ferguson Avenue and uh Robert Britt, so it runs right under that library parking lot. So just east of that Museum Avenue, there's this, what we call a interference structure, and, and we believe that's a source of contamination and probably some of the smells, um, that's been a complaint over there. But the CIP will uh clean and, and re-line this pipe and mitigate this problem.
Okay, any questions?
And it, and if you look at the totals there on the numbers there, it actually will come under a little bit under the original, um, that y'all had to, to do those other two lines. Even those other two lines have only been inspected and cleaned, um, you're solving the problem here for just a little bit less money.
Perfect. Any questions? Item number twenty-one. Seeing none, we'll be looking for a motion to approve the revised proposal twenty-five dash zero-two-two-two dash zero-one.
So moved.
Alright, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second, please.
We have a motion and a second, last call for questions. Seeing none, please call or roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer? Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. Alright, item number twenty-two, we have a city manager applicants chosen for interview, Ms. Koger.
So based on council's direction, we posted the position for city manager, left it open for thirty days, and it closed the end of November. We ended up with nineteen total applications that came in, of which nine met all the criteria that we were looking for. One of those withdrew today, um, and so that leaves eight remaining uh applicants that met the criteria. And so we just need uh council to define who they may wanna interview of those eight, with the understanding that some are required interviews because of their veteran status and being a municipality.
Okay. Alright, so I trust everybody has seen the uh highlighted field that uh, highlighted document that was sent out by Denise.
Yes. Yes.
Is there any of the highlighted ones um, that we wish to remove, do we want to interview all of them, three or four of them? What is the feeling of the council?
I definitely think we should interview the three that have military background.
We don't have a choice over that, you have to do the three veterans.
Do we have to do all the veterans, um, Ms. Koger?
Yes, ma'am.
So how many total is it?
Uh, there's three that are in, uh, with veteran status.
Correct, yep. Anyone?
Um, can I, can, can you tell me, just so I can make a mark on my paper here?
Yeah.
Which ones are the veterans?
The, the double asterisk.
Double asterisk, okay. The double asterisk ones, mhm.
Highlighted double asterisk.
So I'm gonna, I would like to throw in the name of um Stephen Honeycutt, for sure.
That puts us up to four.
Is there a reason why we're stopping at that, I mean, can we talk to all of them?
You can make a motion to do all of them.
Certainly do all of them if you like.
'Cause, you know, just because um, it doesn't, you know, make, mm, on the paper, I'd like to talk to all of them.
Okay.
Even the one mentioning the higher salary that goes above what?
So she's withdrew.
The, no, the, uh, Tariq.
There was one, one other gentleman that came in with a high salary, um, noted on the paper there, and said that he would be willing to work for a lesser range.
I personally would be, would be happy with those four.
Okay, so we got one feeling for four, one feeling for all. Anyone else?
So you're saying Jim four plus the three?
No, the three plus the one that uh, Philly suggested.
Plus Stephen Honeycutt.
That's, that's who I think. Since we suggested to try to limit to three or four, which I think is what we had, last time we had four, it was a, it was a long process.
I think it was three.
Was it three?
Yeah.
Yeah, we started with four and one backed out of the interview process.
You're right, absolutely.
Mr. Macklin in the back there, just have to give your name and address for the record, please.
Tom Macklin, six zero nine East Main Street, here in Avon Park.
Yes, sir.
Um, I would encourage you not to limit yourself to the opportunity to talk to people. Sometimes you learn a lot just by going through an interview process, you might interview somebody that might not make it down to your final list, but they'll have some very good attributes or suggestions that you might be able to take and move forward with. Coupled with that, um, I can remember a time when the top three people that we interviewed all turned down the position, and we ended up settling for number four. So I would say at this early stage, I wouldn't limit yourselves to the opportunity to speak to people. Since you have that number, it's not nineteen. And you might even find, you know, that you do four in the morning and four in the afternoon, but I, I, I remember how we ended up with Mr. Bruce Barons, and when Mr. Coleman was number one, and we found out that some of these applicants were just applying for the job in order to use us as leverage to negotiate higher rates where they were. So I just say, you might not wanna limit yourself first round.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Yeah, I also remember a time where we actually had a citizens committee come up with three, three names, and uh, the committee did their due diligence and went through a multiple list of names, and actually, we were all kind of excited that uh, we thought that definitely one of those three would be the one. Unfortunately, um, the city council at the time turned around and suggested uh, somebody else who submitted their name at the last minute, and bypassed interviews and just uh, made a motion and nominated the city manager without interviewing any of the other three that were not chosen by the committee, so. It's a, it's a difficult choice, but uh, going through eight, I s, I see both points. And I, and I do remember that uh, the last one we did, that we did learn things from, from each of the three we had, so.
So Denise, part of this initial turning in paperwork, have you reached out to any of their prior employers to see if there was anything in their files or anything?
No, we, we did that after the interview process, once you narrowed it down to your top two picks. And also remember too, once you go through that first layer of interviews, you can, you can narrow it down and call people back for a second interview, which I believe we did last time. And then, and then went from there, so you could do that too.
Okay.
Um.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead. Denise, I saw stars on, on certain ones. Were, were each one of them rated with a score?
The, the stars are the ones that you, you must interview.
Okay, I'm confused, 'cause I thought we was gonna do the, the way that we did it last time, and the last time, if I'm correct, I thought that they was uh rated with a score. And those was the scores that were sent to us, the ones that had the highest three scores.
The, the rating came from council as part of the interview process, um, which you've also been sent a copy of that rating sheet. So as we go through the interview process, each, each applicant will be scored by council, um, which helps narrow down that process of final selection as well.
Okay, so we have eight names that meet the criteria that have not pulled out at this point, so you wanna just go ahead with all eight? I wouldn't have a problem with that.
I'd be fine with it as well.
I'd be fine with it as well. Four in the morning, four in the afternoon.
So do we have a motion to accept all eight of the names that meet the criteria that have not withdrawn to be interviewed at our next meeting? Or do we want to pick? Okay.
Are we gonna do it at a council meeting or are we gonna, it'll be a special meeting?
We, we did it at a special meeting on a Saturday before and took the day. And so we'd have to select that date and with the holidays, I would recommend a Saturday in January, but not too far out, cause as time passes, people.
We've got, first Saturday is the third, second Saturday is the tenth. Was your motion to make it for the tenth?
Well, do we want to do it before the next council meeting? Well, hold on, let me, let me look at my calendar.
The next council meeting would be the twelfth, looks like.
Oh, the twelfth, I thought it was the eighth.
That's, that's this one.
Okay. I'm sorry. You're right, the twelfth. The tenth, yeah, the tenth will be good. Yeah, I'll include that in the motion.
All right, so we have a motion to interview the eight names that have not withdrawn that meet the criteria on the tenth of January. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Questions?
So if we do this on the tenth, that's not gonna leave us enough time to discuss it on the twelfth, will it? Or we just have handouts on that day if we decide to discuss it on the twelfth?
I mean, it can go a lot of different ways. It could be another round, it could be decided then, I mean, there's lots of possibilities.
So it could be added on the agenda as an add-on, a handout if needed, right?
All right, so we can go ahead and say on the January twelfth meeting, there'll be a placeholder for a potential decision for city manager.
Okay. And I have one more thing, Denise. On this list here, you have under Paul, okay, I'm not gonna try to butcher that name. You see Brandon Carter, right?
Yes.
Okay, and then you go down and you see Paul.
Yes.
Okay. So underneath that is a yellow line and you, it had been highlighted, his PhD organizational leadership had been highlighted. Was he supposed to be one of the ones or no?
Uh, no, that's actually part of length. Because it, I had to wrap the text so it's wider on, on the next one.
Okay. All right, that's all I was curious.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Last call for questions.
Do we have a location and time?
We do not have a location and time.
I would personally like to have them here if at all possible.
Yeah, I agree. It's far better to have them here.
The technology's better, the sound is better.
Yeah.
The location's better.
Time, nine o'clock?
Nine AM?
It's fine with me.
So nine AM, it'd be open to the public, right?
Yes.
Yeah, they always are.
So. I don't know, it seemed like to me it gave the, gave the applicant a little privacy.
You can't, yeah.
I mean, don't get me wrong, they was in a separate room and everybody else was in a different room.
Can't, it's violation sunshine.
You're missing the point, Mr. Burr. I'm not trying to have it private that the public can't show up. I'm just saying, at the airport, it seems to give, gave the applicant a little bit more privacy being in the conference room opposed to out there in the waiting room.
I mean, it was still recorded so they could still hear, but I see what you're saying, it was just the one-on-one with the council and being recorded out into the, to the lobby.
It made it more personal for the council.
How about we put a table right there?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, let's just put them up close.
I feel like, go ahead.
You can't do anything that's gonna thwart the sunshine act and, you know, or cause it to be more difficult for people to attend than the hearing. That's, that's the only point I want to make.
So having that to the airport is more difficult for people to attend?
Well, if they have to go all the way out to the airport to do it, maybe.
Well, then we was wrong the first time we did it then.
Well, there was a particular reason why. We didn't just do it for no reason.
Why we did it?
There was something going on in the council chambers at the time.
Wouldn't it shut down at that time?
Yeah, I think it was shut down for voting or something like that.
That's what we did.
And so we were doing it on a weekend and I think that was early voting or, I don't know, some kind of event was going on.
Okay, so how long are we gonna allot each person? Are we gonna put a time limit on them?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that we should try to go beyond.
Cause that's eight, that's eight hours.
Well, it may take an hour.
Yeah.
Unless you really limit the questions.
We allotted an hour per person last time. Some finished a little early, some tried to push it a little over, but we tried to stop it at one hour.
So we might as well go ahead and schedule a whole eight hours for, okay.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, we can try to shoot for forty-five minutes and.
Yeah, try to shorten it up a little bit.
Right. And then we'll just need to pick appropriate questions to try to get to that forty-five minute mark. Otherwise, we'll be constantly not going through them.
So is the council's chambers?
So is anybody opposed to having it for forty-five minutes per with a maximum of an hour, starting at nine AM?
Keel, yeah, nine's fine.
Well, the alternative was eight.
That's nine is perfect then.
Okay.
What day?
Uh, January tenth.
Are you gonna want me there?
All day, Jerry.
I mean, do you, do you, no offense, but do you have to be here?
I don't think that's necessary.
I think he was there last time.
I'll bless you if I don't.
Just bless us, thank you. Cause you're expensive.
But you're, you might want to get your labor counsel, see if he would be available by phone if you have any questions that come up.
Good point.
Just make sure you run the questions past your labor attorney first. If you have, you know, written questions, we did last time, just to make sure you're not asking any prohibited question. And they are easy to ask by accident. Some seem very innocuous and yet they are violation of law.
Understood.
So Denise, last time you asked the questions and then if we had follow-ups, then we were able to ask them live. Is that still the same plan?
Yeah, I think so. I think that worked okay, if that's what council wants.
It seemed to flow good last time.
So the interview questions that you had, those are typically the same thing that we had last time.
The ones that I emailed were different questions because I didn't think we should probably use the same exact questions as last time. But we can, if that's what council wants. These, these were modeled similarly, but not the exact same questions. So tried to cover all aspects of the city operations.
And she sent an update today that had like three additional questions on it, too.
That, that is a different agenda item.
You change your mind about me being attending, I will, of course, so just let me know.
Very good. All right, anyone opposed to this action here? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and call a roll then.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. All right, for the questions, how are we gonna do, how are we gonna narrow down these questions?
You can tell me.
Without mentioning all the questions here.
Yeah, the number, sequence. If there's one on there that you don't think is appropriate, you can just tell me that number and I'll take it off. Last time we, we kept it at, I think it was about twenty-eight questions, just for time's sake.
See if I can pull the list up here.
Did you give them examples of prohibited questions?
I, I will with the final, yes.
All right, thank you.
I did, I did last time, too.
I think, I think I recommended last time as well.
I personally, Denise, think that, um, after you went back and did some revising, I think all the questions was appropriate. I think it should be up to the applicant, how far they get through the questions, how long they take and all of that. I think that's how we did it the last time. Yeah.
So are these questions classified?
Right now, yes. I think that that's better. And, and the reason for that is if we publish them, then any applicant, hopefully no one would, but any applicant can go out to AI and Google great answers and come in and tell you exactly what you want to hear, but may not know the, the reality behind the answer.
Item number nine, I'd like to remove.
Okay.
Any other questions anybody wants to remove?
I, I have one that I asked last time that I really liked, so is, I guess it's gonna be too late then after tonight, right?
If, if we're removing item number nine, if you just want to email it to me, I can add it.
Okay.
As long as it's not the same as item number nine.
I'm not, I don't think it is.
Nah.
No, because these are from.
I'm, I'm just messing with you. I know it's not the same. Okay, anything else? Seeing none, do we need a motion for that? Jerry?
Yes.
Okay, make a motion that we remove item number nine. Shelley mentioned that she had a question, she's gonna email that to Ms. Koger. If deemed appropriate by Ms. Koger, she will insert that as item number nine, or as question number nine. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
I also don't mean to make this uncomfortable, but we have an applicant who works for the city. I want to make sure that those questions, not insinuating anything, please don't take it that way, but we need to make sure these questions.
Yes, yeah, he, he has not been privy to any of it and that's why I've sent it the way I did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good. All right, anything else? Moving on to item number twenty-five, we establish the terms of appointment for the interim city manager, Jason Atkinson.
So there was, you gonna lead it or you want me to?
I'm trying to scroll. If you can give me a page number, I'll get down there.
Five thirty-five.
The, for whatever reason, the tabs get messed up on this version. Said five thirty-five?
Yeah.
All right, here to establish the terms of appointment for the interim city manager, Jason Atkinson. At the regular city council meeting on November the tenth, city council voted to appoint Jason Atkinson as interim city manager, effective beginning November twenty-fourth. Crucially, Mr. Atkinson is not a current city employee. Therefore, a formal appointment requires the establishment of a defined term of his service, including compensation, benefits, duration, scope of the agreement. Council's initial motion did not determine these specific terms. This report is brought before the council to finalize these details to facilitate the immediate commencement of the duty. Staff recommends establishing the following terms for the interim city manager position. Number one, compensation be the contract rate. We need a proposed compensation, a flat rate of, it's left blank. Is that left blank for a reason there, Denise? Is there not generic numbers to plug in or?
Uh, there is not. The range for the city manager is a hundred to a hundred and thirty. So depending on what council feels is appropriate in the interim role, discussing it with the interim city manager.
Okay, and Ms. Kelly was at?
One, one thirty, I think she got up to.
One thirty. Okay, but she began at?
Uh, I'd, I'd have to go back and look.
I think she had two raises by that point.
Mm-hmm.
But, but she was a city manager.
Started one twenty.
One twenty.
She, she wasn't an interim though.
Correct.
No, she was actual higher end.
Do you remember what Chrissy started out as when we put her in the interim spot? Eighty-seven?
Yeah, she went up to eighty-seven.
What'd she start at when she started?
She was like sixty?
So when she went from the clerk into the interim, it jumped her to eighty-seven?
Yep, I mean, I think for interim purposes, a hundred. Sound round? It's lower than any of the applicants by far.
I was not thinking that high for an interim position.
Doing the same tasks.
I don't think it's the task, I think it's the experience too, mayor. I, I think we have to consider what experience Mr. Atkinson brings to the table as well.
Okay, is there a suggestion or?
I'm, I'm good with the hard. Starting salary, less than what he was asking even for permanent, so. It'll need a motion.
Well, is there any other parts to this besides just the salary figure?
And as well as the benefits that outlined in there.
Okay, so. Denise, you want to go over the things that we need to actually agree to tonight for this?
Um, just mainly the, the scope of the salary in that role. He's already receiving the benefits as, as an employee, so it's not like we're contracting for somebody to come in, he's already in.
Okay.
Um, but the salary step was missed at the council meeting that was decided to use him as an interim.
So we just need to come up with the salary figure? Okay. With that, I'll make a motion that we agree to a hundred thousand as a salary for the interim city manager. One hundred thousand per year. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Did you make the motion?
I did, I made a motion for a hundred thousand annually.
I'll second that and part of the reason that's even less than what he was previously making when he worked here a year ago, or less than a year ago.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question for Denise. Denise, is Jason a W-two or ten ninety-nine?
He's a W-two employee.
Any other questions?
Are you planning on utilizing the health insurance also?
No, I'm a veteran, so I, I requested the stipend, which is less than what the city normally pays.
A lot less, about half or less.
Any other questions? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
No.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. All right, we have attorney updates.
Yeah, so with regard to this PFOS, PFAS thing, it's basically their chemicals that have been known to get into the groundwater that as a result of using foams. There's those ways, other ways that I'm not aware of, but the biggest way is the fire suppressing foam used at airports and so on. The, we, we got a, basically a proposal from a law firm that's doing that work. And they sent it to us and Tommy and, and would like to go forward with that. I know it's originally spoke with Jason, he wasn't sure, but you know, he says that Tommy wants to go for it, we'll go for it. I did look at the agreement and I have a couple of issues with the agreement. I just wanted to go over, it's your, your decision. I did, I did contact another Florida firm, by the way, but the, and they said they were gonna send me an engagement information, but I have not received it yet and I'm not sure we will. They may have looked at the size of the city and said it's not worth our time, but you know, I'm. When I spoke to them, they said they would send us something, they did. So. A couple of things that I'm concerned about, if you look at it, you know, at the, at the top of the agreement and, and much of the agreement, it basically talks about the fact that you're gonna, the client shall only pay attorney's fees contingent on a cover and shall not pay any attorney fees if there's no recovery. But, you know, if you're planning on making, getting some money out of this, there's a few things that are gonna be, you have to meet the cost. So it's based on the, the recovery of your gross recovery. That is the net of the expenses. So whatever you receive, let's say you receive a hundred dollars and the expenses are ninety dollars, you get ten dollars. Okay, so it'd be all the attorney fees plus a few things they've thrown in here that I've never seen in a, in a fee agreement before. Trial consulting fees, that would be somebody who, you know, gives them a advice. You've probably seen it on TV where they give them advice as to who would be a good juror from the juror pool and who's not a good juror and so on. There's a science to that and they're not cheap. Mock trial costs, which if you get a bunch of your attorneys in there and they do a mock trial, you're talking about a pretty expensive proposition for doing that. And then shadow jury fees, that would be like if you picked a jury, a group of people to be your jury and you, they present the case to the, that shadow jury, as I understand it, that would be, that cost. The rest of it's pretty standard stuff, Westlaw and so on. So, I mean, I, if you're counting on getting, you know, a lot of money out of this. So, I mean, I, if you're counting on getting, you know, a lot of money out of this, I think that that's probably not, not much, but if you wanna get information, get analysis for free and so on, but we can't quit the case, 'cause we quit the case, they get paid, you know, for their time. It says, um, and the attorneys have the right to withdraw from the representation after giving reasonable notice, and if they are dis, they're discharged, or disqualified, or otherwise ceased to serve the client's legal counsel prior to the settlement or final judgment, then withdrawing discharged or disqualified attorney shall receive as compensation services for reasonable fees based on the facts and circumstances of representation. Now, does that mean that even if you, if, if, uh, if, if they're discharged, and we don't get recovery, does that change above? I don't, I think, I don't think they could make that argument to the, the bar association, um, but it just bothers me to have that language in there, because it's, it's contrary to what they say, I'd love to get that clarified. Um, and also, the, the, with regard to the trial costs, it says without appro, without prior approval of the client, they're allowed to incur litigation costs as necessary, advisable, and further to their claims, of your claims. That's where the, the trial consultant fees, I, I would prefer they separate those, and you've got, you know, if you're gonna go to a trial, you know, those would be something you would do, um, but, um, you know, how much, how much that would be allotted to you as opposed to somebody else, you know, I'm not clear on that. So, those are a few things that I, that I really have just some, a little heartburn over, I would say.
Mr. King, uh, was your recommendation to, to go on this route based off of some other town's outcomes, or, or do you have experience with this firm, or?
Just in, um, talking in some of the work groups with the water, uh, other water folks, I believe Pope County's already received, uh, some, some monies back, 'cause they were in phase one. Um, the municipality I was with before, worked with the University of Florida, they actually, that's how we did all our testing over there, um, to, to figure out, you know, how, what the water quality was there, and if those levels existed there. Um, and they did not, and they probably will not here. Most of these concentrations for this bad stuff they're talking about, they're either around sites, like he was saying, where they've had some industrial, or, or firefighting, and, and they've contaminated the groundwater, um, but it, everything rolls downhill, so I'd say our, most of our coastlines in Florida, those are the cities that are gonna really be impacted. But what this would allow to do is if there is any monies available, uh, we don't know legislation-wise, what's coming down the pipe, they're keeps, they keep talking about, um, mitigating wastewater for PFOS, you know? Um, I don't, I don't know what all that's gonna entail, and that's what this class action is about, to, to get recovery funds for the cities for whatever future cleanup that, that may happen. And digging around here just a little bit, um, University of Florida has done some testing on y'all's lakes and stuff, and, and there's just like, not, not what they would consider the contaminating amount, but just a little bit, uh, in one of the lakes, just south of the, south of the city here. Um, but y'all have never had y'all's water tested, this would, at least y'all would get something beyond that UCMR testing that we, that we do. This would test for all those elements in the groundwater to, to determine if y'all have a problem.
Is it something that's done all around the city, or, or in the?
They do it at your, at your source wells.
Okay.
So they take, um, you know, the wa, the wells, uh, straight out of the ground, all y'all's water, believe it or not, is well water, we treat it, but it comes out of the aquifer, so they'll, they'll treat it right here at our sites, our well sites, um, and, and test that, and see if PFOS is present. And then, um, I think if you go on that cleangroundwater.com, that's what they were trying to send us to, uh, take a look and, and, and see what's, what this is all about, um, there's a way you can estimate how much you potentially could get back based on contamination levels, but we're not gonna know that until we do that, that testing.
The recovery level, right, that they had on, on there, and that would not be the net of their expenses.
Right.
So.
Okay, so I guess Jerry, do you think that the risk is worth the reward here?
I, it's, I don't know, I don't know enough about it to, to really say.
Well, you gotta know Jerry, we gotta make a decision.
I wish I knew about PFOS and PFAS, but I don't. I used to be in the water business, but I'm not anymore.
So, are they gonna do any initial testing to see if it's present, and if it's present, they take us forward with this case, or it's, we're just, once we're in, we're in, whether it's, it's present or not?
Yeah, no, my understanding from the presentation that me and, me and Jerry attended was, they're, they're gonna, at risk, do the, do the testing for the city, uh, there's a deadline for that to get reimbursed, and then, um, once they have those samples, you know, whatever the levels are, you know, they're gonna, they're gonna pursue it with this class action. There's a lot of communities that, that don't have any levels, but because the future's unknown, as far as what EPA, or, and that, there's some political winds there, as far as what they're gonna require for recovery efforts, um, you know, those are unknown, so there's cities that are, that are getting money back, that don't have PFOS contaminations in their wells. And that likely may be the case here, but, you know, you can have that testing, testing done, if it's, you know, if not, main thing is if it's not a risk to the city, um, and if they, we, we do all this testing, we find out that our water's good, and we do maybe get ten dollars back, then it's, we know, we know what, what's in the water, and we got ten dollars.
Understood. Jerry, anything else to say about that?
Well, just that, you know, if you decide to go forward with it, I would like to at least talk to them about this, um, some of these issues here that I, that I mentioned, just to clarify that they are, you know, if, if they quit, they get money out of the judgment, that's the way it typically is with contingency fees, but if there is no judgment, then nobody gets anything.
So it would be possible to approve it, subject to your review?
Yeah.
Okay. Is anyone opposed to go on that route? Anyone care to make that motion? So moved, anyone wanna second the motion?
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second, last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, city manager report?
So last Friday?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, can we go back to item number twenty-five?
Sure.
Just for clarification on the four hundred dollar stipend? In, in lieu of the insurance? Can we get a motion for that, just so we know how to proceed? And if it could be retro to when he started?
Yeah, I was gonna say, the, the four hundred dollar stipend needs to be included in that motion, based on what Melody shared with me, and it needs to be retro to when we started him in that role, which is the, the salary, to November twenty-fourth, as part of the motion.
Okay, so the salary and the stipend will be retroactive, uh, to when he started?
Thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none to make that motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes. City manager report?
Um, sorry. I need, I, I have the council discussion updates, I, I have a question, can, can I go to that first, before we hit the, uh, city manager report? 'Cause it may be something you might talk about, so, um, the airport board of directors application, has that been published online yet, or have we got anything that needs to be, I mean, what's going on with that?
No, I, what's that?
I am working on it, I, I was working on it to bring that to the interim city manager, to see what, how, how we should proceed, 'cause I haven't heard anything since, so, I did that, I did an ordinance, and a, like a staff report, I will give it to him and see what he wants me to do with it.
Okay, I've just, I've had a couple people ask if it's been online, and I didn't know what to tell them.
We've had several people call.
Okay.
And it'll be online about when, do you think?
Well, it depends on how you wanna proceed, you know, I, I, I didn't find any bylaws, I didn't find any ordinances.
Okay.
I would think that you would need to officially adopt the board first, and then we can do all that at the same time.
Understood.
But, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, so.
I understand, does that answer your, the original question?
So we're looking at probably January, then?
What it would appear.
Yeah.
But, I mean, we gotta put everything together, so, uh, the process of putting it together, and make sure we're in the, the right route, so we gotta establish the board, and everything that, that entails, so bringing it to you, and making sure Jerry's good with it, and then we go from there, y'all vote on it.
So then maybe we can shoot and tell me if I'm wrong, if you can't do it by then, so I don't expect it, but can we have it by the next January twelfth meeting, you think, to discuss?
So I think what you're saying is that you wanted the, the board that gets established, the airport board, to have a say in this, or no?
So I, I think we just established a framework overall of, of what we're trying to accomplish, right? And then we go from there, and, and, and then we can, you know, whether we get the, the, the members, but we ju, we just formally establish the board.
Okay.
But we have to have people show interest in the board first, right?
Wish, wish they are.
And I think we need to have the framework, just to make sure they know what they're getting themselves into, as far as the interest of parties as well.
Okay, anything else? City manager report?
Okay, so last Friday, uh, there was, uh, for part of the legal services, the civil litigation, RFQ twenty-five eleven, that was, uh, twelve-five-twenty-five, we received, uh, two, two, um, bids came in, or just two RFQ, uh, submittals, um, of work for qualifications, so, I, um, I believe it's best that on January, at, at our next council meeting, we can come up, we can create, we can, uh, create a, a council item for you all to, to take a look at, but we need to score this, because there is an, an evaluation committee, I was thinking about talking about it tonight, but there's an evaluation committee, part of the, the RFQ. So did you want us to pick the, the people on the evaluation committee? Um, do you want me to do that, or do you all wanna pick, uh, three members for the evaluation committee?
Who was on the evaluation committee last time, besides Dr. Kelly?
Um, I was, um, Jessica and Winnie?
Jessica and who?
Winnie?
Oh.
And finals.
Oh, Winnie, okay. Um, I don't know, I kinda like to use the same ones.
I agree, I don't think it's gonna make that much of a difference anyway, because it's, at the end of the day, it's gonna be up to the council. Yeah, there's only two, there was only two people that came in. Exactly, but I say, I'm like Shelley, I say use the same two. Same three?
Okay.
Same three? It'd be the city manager and those other two.
Okay.
You, okay.
That would be myself, yeah. We're gonna have to replace Jessica, so.
Melody?
Yep.
Deal.
Yes, yes, Melody.
Okay.
And, uh, for our last, uh, in our last meeting, in, uh, the airport, we went with Flight Academy to, to, you know, to start that off, we were gonna bring that back, uh, to you guys for the, the, the sign, the contractual agreement, that was gonna be formalized. However, Humberto, he, he decided to decline the option to move forward with that. So since then, uh, we, at that same exact day, we put staff out there, which was Jeremy, uh, Jeremy Boggs in IT. Uh, we also implemented and spoke with, um, we put it out among city staff, of any city staff that wanted to volunteer to try to learn how to do that, at this time, I don't ask the HR directors, we received anyone, so right now it's just Jeremy that has, uh, stepped up to the plate, and really helped us out. Um, happy, happy to say this, and to update the, the certification that was on Humberto's wall, that gave him the, you know, the certified, uh, the level of knowledge needed to be on the fuel farm. Uh, Jeremy has a fuel safety supervisor certification, the line fuel service cer, uh, certification, basic apron safety and security certifications, so he's already achieved those. And he's been at it, and he's, uh, showed a willingness to go out there and, uh, get whatever certification is needed, because he sees that as what he likes to do.
Way to go, Jeremy.
Yeah, thank you, Jeremy. So, um, he's moving forward with that, we're trying to finalize some of the details with, uh, the fuel. So one of the, the fuel companies that we were looking to use, they did come back to us originally with, they said, con, consistent, there's a five-year, uh, fuel service, um, agreement for them, and, but they submitted a three-year because of what we were going through, then I came back and told them one year. Um, so we were discussing, actually, we discussed that on the phone, but then, you know, looking at World Fuel, a company that we used to use, according to Danielle, um, Danielle Phillips, we were, basically, we weren't in a contractual situation with them, is that accurate, Melody? So it's, you know, I, I don't like to be in contracts personally, so I like to, to be able to maneuver as we need. Um, looking at things, our, our large fuel truck is working, so we may not even, we still have to put it through like a, a dry, let's say a dry run, but we have to, you know, make sure everything works good, and we fill it up. But everything seems to run fine, it's clean, uh, we had our tanks cleaned recently, so they've all, they've been cleaned out, they're fine. Um, and it looks like we can just have the larger scale fuel truck, or the, the jet, the jet fuel truck for the, the large gallons, the, uh, quantity of gallons, and then the other ones can just pull up to the, to the pumps. So, um, I think we're in good shape, but I still, how we, uh, go forward, whether, you know, you all like the trajectory where we are, or do you want me to go back to the contractual management, or just push forward? Um, speaking to Lowell, we were going to, uh, try to develop a, a, a good, uh, job position out there for the airport manager. I did ask, um, I, I think it might have been Nick, I think I asked, um, Nick if he can give me the basis, like of the, the minimum qualifications, like what qualifications are minimum, and then we can go and pick something above that, but I didn't wanna pick something that wasn't the minimum, and then turn around, we, we were in a bind. So, that's kinda where we are, are, are you all, uh, feeling, uh, to, would you like to try to get something out there to, to do more of a formalized contractual, I guess, uh, RFP, but we end up putting, we put together something better than what was brought last time, because we didn't advertise for that, and that was just kinda on an emergency basis? Or do you want to go the route of internal staff going out there, start looking to, to fill that internally? What's your, what's your feelings?
Well, just, just so I'm clear, the internal staff that we have are able to meet the requirements right now?
Right now for that, um, there is a course, a forty, I think it's a forty-five hour course that Jeremy said he would love to, to take, which is a airport manager certification course, and it is recognized, uh, by, by airports as being, uh, for airport manager.
Yeah.
So, seems like a very good certification.
Yeah, I mean, if, if internal staff are able to handle it right now, and we're not deficient in anything, we're able to fuel planes out there, I mean, ideally, yes, it's, we're gonna make big changes, but we want those changes to be done by the airport board that gets established. So, if we're not deficient, I don't see why we couldn't let that go until we get that airport board established, rather than trying to get another professional service group out there to, just to hold over until the board may go a completely different route again, so.
I agree.
But, what do you guys think?
Sounds good to me. I agree, but, um, what is his pay gonna be from going from IT to now an airport manager?
Well, that's similar, we don't, we don't have that on the books, so I'll have to bring that forward to y'all, just to see, um, create that, and then bring a, a salary range, and then from there, then we can do that. But we had one in the past, but in my opinion, it was very low, it would be commensurate with what the, the directors are within the city. Um, Jason, I have a question, you said that you've offered the employees opportunity to go out there, volunteer? Is that what I heard you say? So we, we put out a, uh, we put out an email, uh, and we also spoke to people that we believe that may have, um, you know, that we believe would like to do it, and, uh, even to the point where they met, uh, one-on-one with Denise, just to have that conversation, without anyone around them, so if that was something they were looking forward to. So let me make sure I'm understanding you, when you say volunteer, volunteer for the job, or volunteer to just go out there on their own time, what, what are we saying? It's like on a shadow, like volunteer to train, to, to have the opportunity to be considered, uh, to work out at the airport if needed, similar to how we did, like Jeremy, he kinda fell into our lap in a way, but if, um, and also how Danielle, she has the, the knowledge, we wanted to have a couple more people. people that may wanna do it, or I, I didn't wanna just pick and choose and say, that, there's Jeremy, I want Jeremy for, you know. I wanted to be equal for all employees, 'cause, you know, that's, there may be somebody we don't know, similar how Jeremy was, that we think that's an excellent option. So we did put it out there just in case, just to put the feelers out there, 'cause I mean, you started looking around. I, I got aviation experience, Denise has aviation experience, like there's plenty of people that have, that, that you wouldn't know. But, um, that puts it out just in case so the people, they have the opportunity, if they had interest, then they could do it, but we haven't received anything back.
And so, would they be getting a pay raise as well, or it'd be whatever pay they're getting now?
Nobody, nobody's applied for that.
No, I'm saying, when and if someone do show some type of interest, would they, would they pay change, or?
I'm gonna have Denise speak on this, please.
So, so what we did is we offered, and, and we've done this before with, like, the water treatment plant. We offered to staff that were qualified to some degree an internal training opportunity, is what it is. So if they were interested in it, they had some background in aviation, or some background in aviation financials, because that's a huge part of it as well. Um, if they wanted to go to the airport and shadow somebody to learn more about that role, to see if it was something they'd be interested in, um, we would certainly let them do that. And we weren't, we weren't playing favorites on any of it, you know, that, other than those qualifications, because we wanted to make sure somebody has some background, um, to, to go over there and to be able to do that. If, uh, if there were multiple people interested and council decided to go with an internal job description and actually create that airport manager position, then all those individuals could then apply for that job and go through the interview process just like anybody else, uh, to see if, if, uh, they were chosen by the panel to take on that role, and if so, they would get the pay scale for that role.
Understood. Anything else?
Do we need to talk about this Without Borders event?
Yep, we've got several signups.
Oh, okay.
So we've got a, uh, event request, application for Without Borders, uh, Ms. Koger, excuse me. Did, did you take the form? Okay, you wanna brief us on it? Long and the short is, it's the same event that's happened for several years. Uh, we do have Deli in the back here to answer any questions about, uh, this particular event. Is there anything that you need to add to that?
No, sir. She came in Friday after she realized that she didn't get it in, after the packets had already went out. So she, um, asked what she could do. I talked to Mr. Atkinson, and he said to have her come speak to you guys at Public comments.
Perfect. So the event is on January the third, so this will be our last regular meeting before then, so. Do we have any questions for Deli? Okay, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Without Borders Worldwide Event on January third.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Last call for questions.
Yeah, uh, they, they talked to you about the, uh, certificate of, of insurance.
Yeah.
Get them to fill that out properly with, uh, subrogation and additional insured. That would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay. So was that motion, uh, subject to the
Yes.
add-ons that Jerry just mentioned?
Yes.
Do you still wish to make that second?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. All right, next sign up, we have Mr. Tom Macklin. Please give your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir, my name is Tom Macklin, six zero nine East Main Street here in Avon Park. Um, I'm here to speak to you again this evening about the issue that I brought up a few weeks back, about the continuity of office as it relates to the roles and responsibilities of the city managers. Responsibilities, I guess you would say, as
Yes, sir.
in the city charter. Um, there's been some discussions, some on the part of me, some on the part of others, and I still think it's very important to clarify what seems to be a misinterpretation of the charter that was, quite frankly, it was amended in November of two thousand nineteen and never implemented by the city. That requirement, being of the city manager, to make a recommendation to city council of who would be an acting city manager, either during their absence, or worst-case scenario, if they should pass away, but also up to and including resignations, terminations, so on and so forth. Now, that person, and Mr. Bier will be able to speak to this in detail, um, he was right in the meeting that the city council had on February eleventh of two thousand nineteen, when he brought this issue forward. He called it troublesome at the time, um, his words. The way that had been being implemented whenever there was an absence or a vacancy, trying to scramble and find people internally that would or would not be willing to step up and, and act in that, uh, interim capacity. Uh, and so he brought forward, forward language, just, you know, saying, "subject to council approval." And what that did, and, and that was approved, that language was approved on first and second reading ordinances in, in June of that year, and ended up on the ballot in November, and passed, uh, over sixty-eight percent of the citizenry agreed that we needed to have a placeholder. Someone to, to act if needed as an assistant city manager or interim under what Mr. Bier called, and I've done research on it, the advise and consent process, where they recommend you guys agree so that if something happens, it can be orderly, or it could be chaotic. Um, that there is a city employee that has been authorized by council to hold the reins, so to speak, until such time that the council can then convene, might be a week, might be two days, might be a month, and say, "Okay, we need to either hire somebody as an interim or fill the position full-time." Um, Mr. Schrader didn't do that. Dr. Kelly didn't do that. And we've recently seen the chaos that result, resulted by not having that position filled with an internal person that was recommended, and the consent was received by city council, saying, "Yeah, we'll do that." And so, this is not an interim necessarily, that you would say, "Okay, you're gonna be the person for six months," but it doesn't mean that they can't be. Um, it's just a, a placeholder. I had somebody I was explaining it to, and I said, "Would you get on an airliner that didn't have a co-pilot?" And they laughed. And I said, "Well, look, you gotta have somebody maybe to hold the, hold the steering while they walk down the aisle and go whatever." But if that pilot meets a demise while they're in the air, you at least wanna have somebody able to get the plane back on the ground. And that's not that much different than this. So, I personally believe that even during this interim capacity with, with Mr. Atkinson, that that position still needs to be filled. You know, because I don't want anything to happen to anybody. But anything can happen to any one of us at any given time, and then you can find yourself right back in a chaotic situation. I mean, and to be sure, I mean, we have, and I'm not casting any shade here, but we have a, a city council that, you know, is three to two, two to three, and all it takes is one person to maybe change their opinion about how things are going, and the next thing you know, we either have a resignation or another termination, and we find ourselves without somebody already authorized by you all to fill that gap. And that's what this is. It's a, something to fill a gap until you can get together and decide, "All right, now what are we really gonna do moving forward?" So, I think this needs, still needs to be done. You may defer it until you have a full-time city manager, but you still have this gap that, that I think you need to protect the citizenry and the, and the city, uh, with, and so, um, I'm sorry that, you know, I'm the one to bring this up. I'd, had reached out to a couple people, and I'd have preferred for it to come from one of the sitting council members, it didn't. But that being the case, I'd be interested to hear, you know, what Mr. Bier has to say about it, or anybody else's comments, but I'm convinced that this is the right way to go, uh, moving forward, and I appreciate your time, and I stand for any questions.
Certainly.
I have a couple comments, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
I actually agree with you one hundred percent. The, the charter does say that we shall do this. It does not give us a timeframe on one that must be done, but I would strongly suggest we do it as quickly as possible. But that being said, it's very difficult when you get a se- let, let's just say, the last city manager got here, she, I believe she came from California. It's gonna take her a while to know members of staff that she would think qualified to take her place. I believe when she went to a couple conferences, she did reach out to a staff member and said, "If it, while I'm gone, you can reach out to this person for any questions," then her cell phone would be on all the time. But obviously, in the case of something more drastically happened, yes, we need to have somebody there that is basically picked by the interim and, and if possible, at the, has a timeframe, or at least by the next city manager, which could be anybody. It could next city manager, it could be somebody from out of state again. It would take them time to go ahead and find somebody that they would feel qualified and, uh, would do a job that would, uh, necessary while, while they're absent. Now, with, um, with all that being said, that, uh, you know, it, it, it's a difficult situation like what we had here recently, to where this goes up to the city council to try to find somebody quickly. And because the previous city manager did not have somebody lined up in their place, just like you said, it should have been done, but it wasn't. So it was a last-minute decision by us. And one of the choices that we gave was asking for the existing city manager at the time to give us a name of somebody that would take the job as interim city manager. And I don't know what her exact words, but it was something like that she said there was nobody in staff that was interested in taking that position. So we were kinda like, had to do something quickly, uh, and, uh, as possible, and make our own decision on this council, which we did. And I think we were very fortunate to have somebody that was able to do that as quickly as we did. But I agree with you one hundred percent, that we need to direct the interim city manager to look into the possibility, if he can fi- because he was previously employed here, whether he knows somebody that he thinks qualified to designate or bring her back to us to do that position, or even the next city manager to do the same thing as quickly as possible, but they're limited to the amount of time it takes them to have enough knowledge to do that. Now, if you wanted to pick somebody now because of the fact that the meeting, that the previous city manager says she had nobody on staff, I think one of the options would be for us in the future to look at, would possibly be to, uh, our fire chief, Andy Marcy. And the reason why I would suggest him as a possibility is because, like you said, something could happen to that person. And does that person have somebody in line that would take their place? Uh, I know finance might have somebody that could take their place, because we have two people supervisors, directors in, in finance. Uh, we actually might have somebody in, uh, HR. We have two people that work in the same office in HR, so they have one person as a backup to run into their out of the office as it is. Uh, and maybe even public works. But, uh, these are all things that need to be, uh, uh, brought to the attention that the city council should say, "We acknowledge this. We need to do something about it. We need to let the interim and next city manager to be aware of it, to, as soon as possible, in your best interest and your best knowledge, to get somebody in place." So I agree with you, the charter does say that. It says that shall be done. It doesn't necessarily give a timeframe, but obviously, it needs to be done as quickly as possible, so I do agree with you on that point.
Matt, can I answer a couple of his questions, or would you like to go first, Jerry?
I was gonna say, you've said it as well as I could possibly say it. Um, you know, I was, what I intended when I drafted that was that they have, they have to be educated as to who's capable of doing it, and, you know, willing to do it, and, and so on, and it's gonna take time for somebody to get comfortable with the staff members to see who, who would fit that bill. I don't think would, you know, I didn't anticipate interim, but if it, you know, is gonna be there long enough to, that, to make a difference, you know, then, um, that's something you can consider. But certainly, I think it has to, it should happen, and it should be pushed by the, the, uh, council because, you know, a year is too long, and, uh, you know, probably less than six months would, would be good, maybe even a quarter. But it depends on how much time. They should probably interview people and figure it out pretty soon, when they get into office.
I'd like to say a couple things to what you mentioned there, Jim.
Sure.
And this would be in Dr. Kelly's defense.
Sure.
Okay? Um, because I'm, I'm not up here, uh, bringing this to, to people's attention as some type of attack, and I understand that may have been received that way on the part of some, so if it did come across that way, I apologize on the front side. In her defense, had her predecessor followed that part of it, there would have already been someone that you all would have approved, that would have been in place when she was hired. And then given time, she could have even said, either said, "Well, you know, that one's gonna be great, I can work with that," or "I see someone that probably would do a better job," you know, so in her defense. Um, but it didn't work out that way. And I think one of the reasons, particularly most recently, that I felt so passionate about making sure I brought this up, was the fact we could have avoided the public humiliation, I believe, of, of David Flowers, because that wouldn't have been necessary. We would have already had somebody that was in place. And quite frankly, some of the comments that were directed to the now interim city manager, th- those would have been questions maybe reserved for an interview process and, and not for an appointment process here in a public venue. And so, we have the opportunity to avoid the chaos, and it's in the charter that way, and it's been that way since November nineteenth. So I encourage you to take a good, hard look at it and work with the attorney, and, and move forward to resolve that. And if anybody wants to know anymore about it, Mr. Foster and I sat down and we did about a forty-minute-long podcast. You can go and listen to it on YouTube at The Barry Foster Show on YouTube. If you really want to know more about it than you probably ever wanted to, uh, but I appreciate your time.
Tom, I very much appreciate you.
So, I, I have a question, Mr. Macklin, don't leave, I'm sorry.
Well, I just, I, real quick, while you, before you ask your question, I think it's important to, just so we don't scare any staff members off, um, is it still can be a temporary, like you said, a day, you know, a week, two weeks, or whatever, it does not have to be then the interim city manager position. I think that's what, you know, scares a lot of those staff members as far as taking that on their, on their shoulders for an extended period of time, so I think it's just important to make sure we clear that up.
Preferably, they've already been prepped, so to speak. I mean, not necessarily at the level a city manager would be, but they just, they have an ongoing information gathering, so they're already kinda ready to do it at any point.
Right.
Yeah, and the way the language is, it is a bit misleading. You really have to drill down into it because there's two opportunities for an interim position. There's the one, when somebody leaves, it's from the time that the position becomes vacant until the city council either hires a new interim city manager to act in a more long-term capacity, or a full-time city manager. So, I agree with you one hundred percent. I can see where a long weekend, or a, or a week or two would be that interim role until you all decide, "Okay, now what do we, we, we've got, the dust is settled, the chaos is gone, and now we can move." Uh, but your point's well taken. I, I think perhaps that whole interim thing might have been what scared some people off, to say, "Yeah, I can, I can hold the reins long enough for you guys to get your ducks lined up."
Right. So, so let me, hold on, hold on. So, let's just say, let, let's just do an argue, for argument purposes, okay? The city manager has designated a assistant city manager, right? That's what you're saying?
Well, they recommend to city council.
Right.
They advise.
So the city council is, "Oh, yeah, that's great, let's, let's nominate that person." Okay, so then the city manager goes out unexpectedly, and let's just say that somebody And let's just say that somebody is out on vacation or out on medical leave. They can't come back at the time. What would happen then?
You're still going to have to have some type of chain of command that you identify. But at least as far as the charter is concerned, you all have to designate somebody to act as a city manager. It may be that the mayor has to, as the figurehead of the city, or you all get together and talk to the rest of the staff. Maybe it's a person that reports directly underneath them. That's not identified in the charter. That might be something that's more identified in the employee manual or something. I could see where, and I'll just use the fire department as a good example. It's one of the better ones that we have since we don't have a police department any longer. But I mean, we do have a chief. We do have three shifts. We do have captains and we have lieutenants. And then we have people that report in the chain of command. And so I don't think it's unreasonable to expect that in the event that the person that has been suggested and consented by you all, there might be a situation where there's a vacation planned or something like that. But knowing that there has to be a chain is what's key. And so that you can plan for those types of things as opposed to having to try to respond to chaos. I think getting out in front of it is the best way.
So I think the key words, so we don't use the word interim like we shouldn't, but we should, they should appoint an assistant city manager that will act as city manager.
Well.
According to the first sentence, the city manager shall designate a city employee as assistant city manager to exercise the powers and perform the duties. And it goes on and so on and so forth. Such manager designation shall be subject to the approval of the council. And then we will appoint a city manager or an interim city manager. So basically, the city manager is appointing an assistant that will take their place in case of an emergency or sudden departure until we can then appoint an interim or a city manager.
I can remember when Mark Schrader was terminated, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. And I had made the comment about having an assistant city manager so we didn't run into this problem anymore. And either we didn't have the money or you guys all looked at me like I had a third eyeball or something. So, no, I'm just saying, I agree with him and it had already been brought up a couple of years ago, but apparently it wasn't a good idea.
It wouldn't be a new position, I guess is the difference between.
It would be a city manager assistant, yes.
Go ahead, Jerry.
Then they're anticipating to be a different person than we already have on your staff. I'm sure you've got people that are capable of doing that and you don't need to hire somebody as an assistant city manager. I don't think you're at that point yet.
Right.
Well, and to that end, and it was part of the conversation back in February of 2019, just because somebody has been hired with a title of assistant city manager still means though that the council has to authorize them, not because the title's been given to them by the city manager in a hiring process, but consent has to be given by the council to say, yes, the person with that title is authorized to act in that capacity. And I agree with you about the language about being a little bit confusing. But I'm going to read just for the sake of the benefit of everybody that might be on the Zoom and you all here, the actual language that was adopted by the city council in 2019 that made it to the ballot. And it was ballot initiative number seven. And the title was an amendment to clarify city manager's designation of interim city manager subject to council approval. And then it said, the city, the existing city charter shall be amended as follows. And then it goes with the section 3.04, par. F, shall be amended to clarify that the city manager's designation of an interim city manager shall be subject to the approval of the council. And so the language was actually rolled into the ballot language. And so you've got, you've got interim, you've got acting, you've got assistant. And for all intents and purposes, the three are the same, at least as a part, as far as this provision of the charter. And that might be something, Jerry, that moving forward, if there needs to be some clarification in the language that you all look at to clean it up. But in truth, those three are interchangeable with one another the way that it's put together.
Yeah, it was just intended to be somebody to fill the spot between the interim and the person or to fill the spot while somebody's on vacation or, you know, a lot of conference or something like that. I'm not sure that the wording is necessary, but I think this, the actual provision in the charter is pretty clear.
I think so too. I only offered the fact that, you know, when the citizens were voting and saying, okay, this is what they're asking us to do, it was designating it as an interim city manager position.
That could be my fault because we're only given 20 words that you're allowed to use in that, in that spot under the Florida statutes. It doesn't give you a whole lot of space to elaborate. So that's why, that's why we always provide the charter, you know, provision as well. And so it shows what's actually changed.
But I'm happy to answer any other questions, but I know Jerry completely understands it. And I know that the mayor did at the time that the language was being adopted. You know, the other parties that were there that evening was then councilperson Sutherland, deputy mayor Bernard was there and the late Stanley Spurlock were there. Now, obviously Brenda Gray, she was absent that night, but she participated in the rest of it throughout the year and was there for all of the other votes. But I just wanted to bring it forward. I feel it's important for the integrity of moving forward, eliminating chaos and just protecting the continuity of office and operations, you know, in the event that something happens. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tom. All right, we have another sign up and we also have that resolution. Yep. All right, this sign up, it's hard to read this writing. It looks like something green, leery green? Yes, sir. We can get your name and address in that microphone and go ahead with your question or comment.
My name is George Grace, I live at 905 Entrance Road in Avon Park.
Yes, sir.
Let me tell you a little bit about myself before people start blowing smoke at me. I am a electrician certified electrical engineer and mechanical engineer. I worked telephone company for 35 years. One of my last assignments was director of managers and supervisors from West Palm Beach to Key West for all city government. I'm glad to see the utilities director here tonight. One of the key responsibilities was to support the utilities services for their communication, maintenance and observance. I think I talked to you mail last time I was here about the water. Every time I turn around, the water is boil water, broken pipes. And I'm beginning to wonder if you have any kind of surveillance system. And since the, I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot. Since the utilities directors here, do you all use CCTV cameras? And the pipes on the ground and crawl?
Yes, that's what they use to take a look at the sewers.
Okay, do they have a monitoring station? Where all the communication goes back to the monitoring station where you can see where the pipe's going bad?
No, no.
That's what I was talking to you about before.
Yeah, it's not ongoing, we just survey as needed, right?
Well, I'm just gonna say, it would be an advantage and a cost saving to you because you won't need all those employees out there. You have a monitoring station. Generally, generally, communication companies provide that station for you. You can actually see where things are about to go bad or getting ready to go bad. But this thing about boil water every 20 minutes, that's tough. Secondly, I want to know if you use AMI or manual to read the meter, the water meter?
AMR.
You use AMI?
R. We don't, we're not, we're not unbuttoned. It's, it's, you know, drive-by, it's drive-by collection.
Drive-by collection?
Yeah.
So you don't actually see the meter?
Yeah, you can get out and see the meter if you want. If there's an issue, they can get out and see the meter is.
Well, the reason I'm saying this is because I called because my water bill went up 35% over one month. And they said they were coming out to check for leaks and look at the meter. I have pictures, I went in my backyard and took pictures. That meter had not been uncovered in a year. And they told me they read the meter. And they did a water test to see if there was a leak. You know, you put pressure in there to see if there's a leak coming out. They said they did a water pressure. Now, as a citizen, how am I supposed to believe anything anybody says? And the reason I do all this because I just, I also manage my church's buildings and on a volunteer basis. And we spent $16,000 in electric building that we shouldn't have paid or shouldn't have been built for. And I personally had to go out there myself and put a meter across all the legs so we can find out what was really going on. So I started learning to read the meters every day. Now, I can't read the water meter because I can't find, can't see it under there. I know where it was, but you can't see it anymore because the ground has grown completely over it. And somebody in the water department, I'm not, I don't want to call any names, I give it privately to anybody. Because I don't want to be responsible for somebody getting in trouble on the job. But they told me that somebody went out and they looked at it. I said, how in the world could it have done this? I got pictures to show, the ground had never been moved in the whole area. So I'm, how am I supposed to believe anybody? There was a serious problem with it and I called. Young lady told me she was going to turn it over to her supervisor and this is not the first time it happened. I have not heard from a supervisor or anybody. That's been almost a week ago. I got, you know, I don't like to, the last time I did it, I went it down to the water utilities department myself. Walked in and the young lady told me, said, if you got a problem, go up and see the city manager. Now, that's ridiculous. Why would they have you here and you want to bother the city manager down with something like this? It doesn't make sense. We really have a problem. And the 30% on the bill is not really that much, it's the principle of the thing. When you tell me, and I'm looking at all the bills for the last year, and every one of them is averaging 7,000 gallons of water every month. And all of a sudden it turns up to 11,000? I have a leak or there's a leak somewhere else. They told me they went out and they put a pressure test in the meter. How could you do that without digging the thing up? There's no way. I know a lot of things about innovative, about engineering, but even no engineer can tell me that, that you can do that. There's no way. And I'm not just talking about what, I know what I'm talking about. I did it for 37 cities. And you can check with anybody in Dade, Monroe or Broward County and they'll tell you, in Palm Beach. And they know who I am. I've been retired a long time, still get calls. And one reason I didn't get back to you because I had people calling me about doing some consulting work for them to do things. But whoever's over in that department, you need, really need, and I hate to have to come here at a city commission meeting to talk about this. But when I get people telling me, you know, go see the city manager or you, I'm gonna have my supervisor call you back and they don't call back, that's ridiculous. You can't, you can't, really can't do that. Then I read a piece where you were going to put in a new water plant when your infrastructure is all tore up out here. Now, when you put in a new water plant, the pressure is going to go up. So you can guess what's going to happen to the old infrastructure. You're doing it backwards. Anybody want to ask me any question, they're welcome to. But I just wanted to let you know that's what's going on.
We apologize, we'll get your information in 905 Entrance Road and we'll talk to you and we'll get you squared away.
All right, appreciate it.
Apologize for that.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thanks, sir.
I would say something, Jason, Jason, it needs to be noted that you would have to be thoughtful of the EPA. It's a violation. I'm sorry, but I'm like, they have, their bill is going to $20,000 a month, so this is what happens. You hear this now, the past few projects I stood, they said, no, I'm gonna review and I'm not the time of my review. So although we thought that we were pretty much yesterday going, and some of them where they had to go back in right pay for whatever reason, they did all of that. I would say that's not, so I say, for sure they, 78 or 60, they say, no, it's 250, 250, oh, what? Oh, I got a pause, I got a pause, I'll be right back.
So it's starting up again. I can say I've received at least seven calls just this month alone. And we just, what, day number eight? I've received seven calls and I'm just referring them to the water department. But I said, and like I told them, it could be many reasons, but you need to get with them. But they claimed that the city has supposed to, did everything they're supposed to do. Other words, these are not new people. These are the ones that we are supposed to dealt with already.
So we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a meeting this Friday. There were some position changes and there's some job responsibilities. And I'm gonna, I'll make sure that, that people are doing what they're supposed to do and making the phone calls because a portion of that, like the first stage, just for instance, part of that job is for a meter reader is when they go out there, they're supposed to be the first person there, not just call the, not call the water department right off the bat. They're the first face and then they should, they should do, they should go over a checklist of what's going on. And then if it's an issue that they can't solve, then they pass it along. So I don't quite, each, each situation is different. But there is a process and a method to figure this stuff out and it's not, it's not that difficult. But like the gentleman stated, yeah, you can't, you can't pressure track something or you can't do anything like that if you don't know where the meter is, you're not. So, I mean, you can go and hook up to the, you know, you can hook up something to a hose bib and see what the pressure is, but that's not, that's not going to answer. So you gotta do a thorough inspection. And one of the first things you do when, you know, for instance, on a leak like that, you just walk up to wherever the house shut off is, you turn it off or you just make sure, if you can't find the shut off, then you just make sure that everyone in the house, they don't have the water running. And you just take a look at it and you look at the meter and see if it's spinning. If it's spinning, they got a leak. It's very simple, it's not, it's not difficult. But you just have to have cooperation, you gotta be, do the willingness to do the process and we'll look into that. Taylor?
Mr. King, speaking of the water, would you explain to everybody on Zoom and anybody in here that doesn't understand the letter that went out to the residents about the iron? I know that you had replied to my email about it, but if you don't mind, could you explain to that?
Yeah, so a lot of residents, probably 85% or so, received letters stating there's some language in there. And now all that language is directed by the EPA that basically says the contents of your pipe at your house on the service side and on the customer side is unknown. And they give you the whole spiel about lead and what you need to do to mitigate it because you could possibly have lead. So the deadline's passed and basically they've mandated that if we don't know what's in the ground right there, that you have to treat it as lead. And that's what that letter's for. I can, I can assure you, we've already got it underway. Getting these letters out was the, was the first step. But all the services that are, that are prior to that lead date, we're going to be physically digging those up, identifying them. Like this gentleman here says his meter hasn't been uncovered. Well, we're required to go out and find it, dig it up and then identify the pipe on both sides. I think in that letter, it says that if you know what you have on your house, because a lot of times the homeowners, DIYers, they know what kind of pipe they have on their side. We ask you to call that number that's in that letter. We ring it, public works there and we can go ahead and positively identify the pipe on your side. We'll still have to do our due diligence on our side. But all that's going into a database that we'll have to send a report back to the EPA, let them know what we've identified in the system.
Was that a letter that you, did you write that letter or they wrote that letter? And then we just, it was a form letter?
It's a form letter, straight from the, from the EPA.
Oh, because I do have to say it freaked people out a lot and then they accused Avon Park of having poison in the water. So, you know, it kind of freaks a lot of people out.
Yeah, it was a mess.
Yeah, no, it's, it's some scary language. I read it and, and I talked to Jackie that's in the utilities over water sewer now. And yeah, it would scare me reading it, you know. Talks about your kids and all that stuff. But I mean, that is the language that they mandate that's, that's in there, that goes out to all those services that are currently marked as unknown in our system.
So, Mr. King, why just 5%? Why was it only sent out to 5%? Because those are the areas that... So, Mr. King, why just 5%? Why was it only sent out to 5%? Because those are the areas that potentially
No. It's sent out to more than that. That's, all those, what happened was, they hired, the city hired a contractor to come in. And based off of when your home was built, they can determine whether it has lead pipe in it or not, or galvanized that had traces of lead in it. So, they've identified those. Those are the only ones so far in the city, except for the ones that are happening organically as we do work orders, that have been positively identified. Everybody else, if they haven't dug up that meter in, in, at your, at your house, and positively identified the pipe on both sides of that meter, then you got a letter.
We've got a resolution that we need to also get done for.
This is for the PFOS. They provide this resolution. They want us to pass. It's a resolution of the city of Avon Park, Florida, authorizing execution of legal services agreement relating to the AFFF product liability litigation. I would say, you know, we'd need to pass it all, except that I would change the last, whereas, that says, whereas the city desires to authorize the execution of Exhibit A, subject to final legal review.
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. We have any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McKeer?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our regular agendas. Anything else for the good of the city?
Yes, Mayor, I have two questions for Ms. Coe. Ms. Denise, when would the applicants be notified of an interview?
I will reach out to them tomorrow.
And would you keep this council notified by email, anybody that drops out between now and then?
Yes, ma'am. As soon as I know, I'll, I'll send it out.
Anything else? All right. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing no opposition, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
But don't see ya. Merry Christmas to all.